This is a public meeting of the city council. This public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. You are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the Gloucester City Council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minutes will note the interruption. It is the finding of the Gloucester, of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to welcome tonight Ward Two Counselor Dylan Benson, Counselor at Large Marjorie Gilman. I mean, what did I call?
Marjorie.
Ward.
No, fifty-five years.
Counselor at Large Valerie Gilman. At least I didn't mess up the last one. And Ward Four Counselor Frank Majota, Council Vice President, and Ward Five Counselor Sean Nolan, Counselor at Large Jason Grow, and Counselor at Large Jeff Worthley. We also have Grace Poyer, our city clerk, and and we have Kenny Costa, our assistant, I mean, not our assistant, our city auditor, and we have Joe Cahill, our C A O here. And in attendance in the audience is our Commissioner of Buildings, Robert Bakari. And we will haven't been going that long. The city council's vice president will do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to do a moment of silence tonight for Chris Orlando, who was a fairly young veteran in Gloucester that passed away this week. And thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
Oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature, any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak under oral communication? Do we have any online? No. Okay. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor Nolan.
We have a city-owned cemetery advisory committee, Cindy Williams. Are you with us tonight? Online. Can you hear us, Cindy? Cindy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Excellent. There you go. Thank you for your work in wanting to be on the cemetery's advisory committee. If you just want to tell the full council a little bit of itself, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk about yourself, or do you just want us to have a spoke?
No.
Not in a bad way.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that being said, on a committee recommendation, on a motion by Council Grace, seconded by Council Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed to recommend the city council, the city council appoint Susan Wright
Williams.
Sorry, Cindy Williams.
Thank you.
To the city-owned cemetery's advisory committee, term to end two fifteen, two thousand twenty-seven. I'm on here.
It's two fifteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Excellent. Thank you. And I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grow. Discussion. Counselor Benson.
Thank you. One question that I ask everyone that comes before is, what is one thing you hope to accomplish on the committee?
Okay. So I worked for the Gloucester system from nineteen eighty-eight. So my focus is helping the committee create the databases that allows people to find their ancestors through find a grave or through our efforts.
Counselor Worthley.
Just a quick question. So firstly, I fully support Cindy Williams' nomination. I just want to clarify something. We're appointing her to a term to expire in about five months, right, six months, five months. Is that filling in for someone else?
And expired.
Yes.
You will come back again? Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm reading the same thing everyone else is reading. So you'll be up for renomination again in February?
Yes.
Yes.
And then we'll ask to confirm her for that as well?
That's up to the mayor.
Okay. All right.
The charter says, the charter says that they run to February.
Well, I remember, I know that. I just didn't know if there was a duplication here of time, but we'll reappoint you, I'm sure, again in February if the mayor, so deems. Thank you, Cindy.
Any more discussion? Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. Cindy, thank you so much for putting your name in the hat. Folks that are on this committee, it's so important, and there's not a lot of fanfare. You just do the job, and we appreciate it. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Val.
Any more discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you're still up. Counselor Nolan.
Number two Gloucester Historic Commission, Susan Wright, fulfilling an unexpired term. Susan, are you with us tonight? How you doing, Susan? If you just want to come to the podium and tell us a little bit about yourself, even though you do a great job at ONA. But you'll find out tonight, and if you want to sing, we'll listen.
Make sure it's on.
Click the button.
Click the button.
Is this the right one? Okay. Can you hear me now?
You can.
Okay.
Go ahead. Do you want to tell us something about yourself?
Oh, okay. Hi, welcome. It's nice to be here and see dedicated people. I promise to be dedicated to the Historical Commission. I see that they have a lot of work ahead of them and not a lot of feet and fingers to get that work done. So I hope I could fill in with my two hands and my two feet and do some legwork for the Historical Commission. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Susan. Is there any council questions?
So I ask this for everyone, and you kind of touched upon it, but is, what is one thing you hope to accomplish on this commission?
I'm sorry, Dylan. I can't really answer that with any professional feelings, other than this is a new start for me as well. I am a member of the Archives and have been for seven years. So I think what I know from the Archives, I can bring that work to the commission as well.
Oh, thank you. And I think that is, that is experience that will be replicated well in the Historic Commission, and I appreciate that, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
Susan, as is the Cemeteries Commission, the Historical Commission and the work that you've done in Archives, Archives has been notable because it's a lot of busy work. You work sometimes in the bottom of City Hall.
Oh, sure.
And I, again, you get the job done. So thank you for putting your name in the hat, and we appreciate it.
Yes.
We had spoken on A, and your experience with the Archives follows through perfectly with the Historical Commission. There's a lot of research and a lot of things that happen, and there's a lot of mediation between the owners of the historical property and the city when it comes times to working with our building commissioner, Rob Bakari, and things that may come up. And your dedication to the last seven years in Archives has been tremendous, and I will say
Thank you so much for the notoriety. Thank you, Sean.
Anybody else would like to comment on this? All right. With that being said, I'll read the motion.
On a motion by Council Grace, seconded by Council Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council, will the city appoint Susan Wright, fulfilling the unexpired term to the Gloucester Historic Commission, term to end two fifteen, two thousand twenty-seven. And I so move.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you. If you ever need anything, feel free to reach out to any of us.
I will, indeed. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have number three Gloucester Historic Commission, David Rylander. David, are you available tonight?
Online.
All right. Not here from David. Has David been sworn in or done any? All right. If he hasn't been sworn in, maybe we should put this one off until next meeting. He's known to us, he's a great guy. I just want to make sure his commitment is valid. Very good. That's it for appointments. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Okay. Would anyone like to pull a matter off of the consent agenda? Counselor Benson.
Yeah. Number two, the city council proclamation to commemorate September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four Hispanic Heritage Month.
Okay. Also, we'd like to pull off number one under Communications and Invitations. I'll pull that off. Anything else?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nothing. Bear with me while I get back on the bicycle. Counselor Benson.
I need to go, or, okay. So yes, the reason I was hoping that we could have this read into the record today and signed with our next meeting being the eighth, Hispanic Heritage Month will be nearly over, and I think it would send a message for us as a council collectively to sign off on this tonight.
Are you asking to suspend the rules of twice before us?
Yes, correct. If we can suspend the rules and read this into the record tonight.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Benson, seconded by Counselor Nolan.
True, just for the record, are we suspending?
The two item, the two, has to appear before us twice.
I know, I just want to get that on the record.
Thank you, Counselor.
I may not have spoken clear enough, but I heard it. So discussion on the matter.
I can read, if people have
You need to vote on the suspension.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of the suspension of rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, zero to seven. All right. Would you like to speak on the?
I can read, read a portion of it, and I can read the whole thing, yeah, into the record, and then we can have a discussion.
Sure.
Okay. Proclamation declaring September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas each year the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the cultural heritage and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas, the City of Gloucester acknowledges the contributions and the impact, and impact that Hispanic and Latin, Latino Americans have made and continue to make in our community through the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of our great city. And whereas, several Latin American countries celebrate their independence anniversaries on September fifteenth, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, while Mexico, Chile celebrate their anniversaries on September sixteenth and September eighteenth, respectfully. Highlighting the significance of this observer observance. And whereas, what began on, what began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Month under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. And whereas, in the words of one of America's most significant civil rights leaders, Cesar Chavez, preservation of one's own culture does not require contempt or disrespect for other cultures. Therefore, we celebrate the contributions of the vibrant Hispanic and Latino diaspora in our city, including individuals from Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador, and many other countries throughout Latin America. And whereas, the city takes great pride in its rich diversity of cultures and its people, as well as the contributions made by all citizens in shaping its past, present, and future. And whereas, we recognize that Gloucester cannot thrive unless our Hispanic and Latino families and communities succeed within our community. And whereas, in the words of one of, in the words of one of the most significant American women in the civil rights movement, for the advancement of Latino Americans and all Americans, Dolores Jota, every moment is an organizing opportunity. Every person, a potential activist, every minute, a change to change the world. Therefore, we recognize Hispanic and Latino community members who have been agents for change for the betterment of our entire city. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Gloucester does hereby reclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, may it be further resolved that the City Council of Gloucester calls upon all citizens in celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you. So you want to make a motion?
And I make a motion to accept it, yep.
Motion made by Counselor Dylan, seconded by Counselor Nolan. Discussion.
Reading out loud is not my favorite thing.
Discussion. Counselor Grow.
I want to thank Counselor Benson for bringing this forward and for recognizing that Gloucester itself is becoming a gradually more diverse community, and recognizing those communities and their ethnic makeup, their cultural makeups, and their heritage is a very important thing that we continue to do moving forward. So I appreciate your efforts.
Counselor Nolan.
I think this is actually a great opportunity. I already spoke to a few of the councils before the meeting. Last Sunday, we had the Fish Box Derby, and lo and behold, some people were walking behind. There was a Hispanic father and his son, and they were wondering what was going on. And the father didn't really speak English that well. He spoke enough. But interestingly enough, we had a car that we could put his son in. He was old enough, he met the requirements, and they had tried it and went through inspections, and they called up and got his sister to come down. And on Sunday, both him and his sister raced in the Fish Box Derby. We supplied cars for them. They were so ecstatic over being involved in it, and their father worked so hard, running up and down the hill, bringing that car up and down. And it was a really special moment for me, because we have people that live here that have the opportunities that have been around for a long time, and they don't get involved. This family was so happy to have something to do on Sunday, to be involved in the community, and they were stand-up. And I believe the son ended up in fourth place, maybe fifth, but it made my weekend that people can buy and enjoy something that most of the people of the city take for granted and have a great time. And I was happy to help them, and so was the whole Fish Box community, and I'm sure they'll be back next year, and that's, that's what we welcome to the city. People that want to be citizens and people that want to be part of our community, and they were great pillars, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
A suggestion, after we sign this, I hope, would be to interpret it as well and have that also on the city website. I think that would be pretty cool. But thank you, Dylan.
I think that would be incredible. My partner is originally from Mexico, immigrant family, and maybe we can work on doing that. So definitely, and I appreciate your kind words and everyone else as well, and I'm sure a few of the counselors are going to want to share. But this is powerful, and this is, our community is changing, and I'm glad that we're recognizing those change, that change, and celebrating it.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero. Madam Clerk, I'm going to put you on the spot for the next piece that was pulled off the agenda.
For this item, the memorandum from city clerk requesting to reduce early voting hours for the first week of early voting for the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four state election. As you know, there's going to be early voting leading up to the November fifth state election, commonly called the presidential election. And there is a provision in the law that allows during that two-week stretch of early voting, for the first week to be reduced by fifty percent. It's something that we did in two thousand twenty-two for the state election, and I'm asking that the council vote to approve it for this election as well. It's a lot of work that goes into early voting, a lot of scheduling of early voting workers and everything else that goes on in our office around elections, as well as everything else that would take a burden off of us to be able to have that reduced by fifty percent for the week. Reason it's getting pulled off tonight is because the vote has to take place at least two weeks prior to the start of early voting, which is the third day, October nineteenth.
Could you just let us know what the hours would be for that one particular week?
Hours, the planned hours, they have not been set in stone yet. The planned hours for that first week would be from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, from eleven to six on Thursday, and from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. Second week of regular business.
Oh, a follow-up for the chair, may I? So I like the fact that you are sympathetic towards folks that might be working by making sure that one of those nights, on Thursday night, that it would be available until the close of business, which is at six-thirty on Thursday night. So thank you.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you. So we're reducing hours for the first, how, what is the number for the reduction of hours compared to like the week after and so on?
Hours for eight-thirty to four, Monday through Wednesday, eight-thirty to six-thirty on Thursday. Business hours.
Can you hit the microphone a little bit closer?
And you're going to do, so like comparatively, so it's going to be thirty hours the first, the first week, you're saying, or is it going to be less than that? Because the
It'll be less than thirty hours. I believe it's seventeen or eighteen hours.
And then going forward, you're going to have some Saturdays as well, or?
Were required by law.
You're required. I know you're required, so just, so that will be in addition to the thirty-plus, the thirty hours for week two?
There's no reduction in the weekend hours. It'll be six hours to consecutive Saturdays.
Okay.
Counselor Grow.
I'm not going to suggest we do extra hours for you. Do we have a sense of how many people do utilize early voting in that, in that first week as opposed to the overall early, early voting numbers?
I didn't come prepared with the breakdown. What I can tell you is that since vote by mail, the numbers of early voting has really diminished. Like, we're looking at maybe less than twenty a day.
Okay.
Counselor Worthley.
Are we in questions or comment period? We put a motion on this table yet?
Well, I think we're kind of in questions, but I think the first motion needs to be to suspend the rules. Read correct? So it doesn't come before us twice?
Yeah.
So that would be the first motion that we have to have.
All righty.
I move to suspend the rules to allow for this vote tonight.
Yes, I make a motion that we suspend the rules to allow this vote to move forward tonight. Motion made by Counselor Gross, then by Counselor Nolan. Any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero in favor. Next, I'll make a motion that we allow the clerk to, that we reduce early voting the first week for the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four election as stated by the clerk.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Now we're in discussion. Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. So thank you for bringing this to our So thank you for bringing this to our attention, Grace. I think the message should be clear that we're allowing for, and making provisions for mail-in ballots, which has been the predominant amount of pre-election day votes. We're creating a scenario for the whole week before the election that people can utilize City Hall at all full-time City Hall hours to be able to vote. We're allowing for Saturdays, which City Hall is typically not open, for people to vote. And in the second week prior to the election, we're allowing people to vote for most of the day. It sounded like you said 8:30 to 4:00? I'm sorry, the first three days?
During our business hours for the second week.
But the first week?
The first week, it hasn't been finalized yet, but the plan is for Monday through Wednesday from 8:30 to 11:30, Thursday from 11:00 to 6:00, and Friday from 8:30 to 11:30.
I think that, you know, we always want to be on the side of making it easier for people to vote. I think that's what we're accomplishing here. And by reducing hours, if people typically aren't going anyway, we're saving some taxpayer money, making it easier for the clerk's office. So I don't feel like anybody's going to say, well, I missed my chance to vote early with the, I don't know, 60 or 70 hours with the weekends and the whole week before, and the two weeks before, to allow them for early voting, especially since they have mail-in ballot options as well and Election Day, where they have 12 hours to vote. So I support the City Clerk's recommendation to reduce the hours.
Counselor Grow.
I just want to go on record, because I'm a big advocate of opening up opportunities to vote whenever possible. But I also respect the fact that the clerk's office is, has the staffing that it has, and we add a tremendous burden on, we add that extra week of early voting. So I support their efforts, knowing full well that there's plenty of opportunities to vote in person, by mail, absentee, or, you know, the good old-fashioned showing up at polls on Election Day. So anything we can do to encourage people to come in and vote is a great thing, but also I respect the demands on your office and appreciate that it can be a bit burdensome, especially if we only, if there were a lot of people coming in and making use of it, I'd be probably a little less likely to support it. But if people are not utilizing it, then, you know, we have to be aware of that, too.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero. You were opposed? Okay, one opposed, Counselor Dillon, Benson. The motion passes six to one. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The September 19th, 2024 Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Thank you very much. We have a committee recommendation for, I'll just, I'll make the motion. On a motion by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Gross, the Budget and Finance Standing Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve budgetary transfer number 2025 SBT 2 in the amount of $1,200 from the City Clerk's wages hourly permanent account, as noted, to the City Clerk purchase of services account number, as noted, for the purpose of paying for a temporary substitute recorder for transcribing minutes, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Worthingley. And Madam Clerk, if you could give us a narrative on this.
Sure. So as you all know, we don't have a clerk of committees right now. That position is still posted. We are working through the interview process right now. It is still posted. It's also called legislative aid, the name changed. So in light of that, with the staffing issues that our office has right now, being short-staffed and in the time of year that we're in, leading up to an election, taking minutes is a little bit burdensome as well. And fortunately, I was able to find someone who can take minutes for us, and this fund will pay for that.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero. The next order of business was a memorandum from the Chief Financial Officer requesting an amendment to the Loan Order 2020-007 for the Combined Elementary School Site Work Loan Order by increasing from 4.2 million to 6.2 million. This is not before us tonight for a vote. This has to go to public hearing, so we'll be discussing this in depth later. But this was, that, with the escalating cost since this project started, in order to just demolish East Gloucester School and make the site a level safe grade, it's going to require this additional funding. That is not, does not include the funding for all the great plans that we saw and the plan that was approved. That will come before us later. So we will be taking this up at a public hearing, and we will hear from the administration and Mike Hale at that time. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The September 16th, 2024 Ordinances and Administration Standing Committee report.
We have no action required tonight. There's some info and some updates in the following. There is progress between Counselor Nolan and Counselor Gross to amend Gloucester Code Orders, Chapter 21, to work on the situation where we're trying to get the city to take responsibilities for their owner's property involved in the betterment. We have a memorandum of the fire chief requesting amendments to GCO, Chapter 8, 842, 847, 848, and 849. All are movements upon the worden of officers in the fire department. That will be coming up. We have one from Counselor Grace, which is going to be a towaway zone on Angle Street that's also going to be coming up. And we have one from Counselor Majota at the area of Echo Avenue in Washington Street, that and Seeall Street, which will also be coming up in the future. Other than that, there's nothing to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nolan. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
September 18th, 2024 Planning and Development Standing Committee report.
We have nothing of voting substance, but we do have two special event applications that we approved for street closures. So mark these on your calendar, December 14th, 2024, is the Middle Street Walk. That's always a great event. There's usually a hayride for the kids, so December 14th, 2024, Middle Street Walk. And the second one is street closures for the Gloucester Holiday Parade and Shreelighting Ceremony on December 1st, 2024, with a rain date of December 8th, 2024. Those, again, great events. Those are late in the afternoon, early evening, and again, December 1st, 2024. So that's it for us.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing 2024 Number 16, SCP 2024 Number 3, the application of 20 Main LLC for the demolition and conversion of an office building to multifamily housing containing 24 units and a retail space at Main Street Number 20, MAP 7, Lot 94, in the CB District.
And this is to be continued until October 22nd, 2024, correct? No. It's already been opened, yes. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
I think that we had a counselor who wanted to give an update from the Human Rights Commission.
If it's okay.
It's okay, but anybody who's a liaison, if you have a report, it would be best to get it into the clerk's office so it can get actually right on the agenda.
It happened last night, so. Just very quickly, there were a couple of items. We had a resident who presented a situation that she wanted to share, which was that she and other women have been accosted for their perceived political views. Oddly enough, there's no particular reason why they were accosted this way, but just sort of rising awareness of tension during the election season. That was the first thing. George Gratton, who is the co-founder of Cape Ann Pride, gave a presentation on his organization and his desire to open up communication and education in the LGBTQIA+ community and in general. So that was a great presentation. Michelle McCaffrey gave a presentation on Gloucester Reads, focused on the book, I'm going to get it wrong here, How the Word Is Passed, and Tales of African-American History. Finally, the, two things of substance for the council's concern, which is that they read their draft resolution on combating anti-Semitism, which we had referred back to them. They've voted to approve their draft and send it to the mayor, since the mayor's office is included in the language. So they will be expecting some commentary back from the mayor's office before they send it back to us. And then they also discussed setting up a subcommittee meeting of their mission to draft a generalized anti-hate speech resolution that would include not only anti-Semitism, anti-Islamic, transphobic, but also anti-Asian and anti-racist speech. So that should be coming up in the next couple of months. It will also be sent back to the council for ratification. And that is it.
Okay, next order of business.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
I have nothing.
I'm not going roll call. Yep. Counselor Gilman.
I've just got a couple of things, not really requests, but just announcements. Saturday is our annual safety day, from 10:00 to 2:00, at Harbor Loop. Tours of Coast Guard Station, boats, motorcycles, police vehicles, kids' games, demonstrations, a med flight scheduled for noon, a bouncy obstacle course, which I did last year, which was not an easy experience. Yeah, don't show it again, please. But it's just a great day, and we thank the Gloucester Police Department and all the different communities throughout the state that come to join them. It's really, it's really cool. They let me sit on a couple of the motorcycles last year, and I felt really cool. Also, I wanted to, we didn't thank Mayor Verga and Chief Conley at the last meeting for their assistance in getting rid of some graffiti that Counselor Majota and I found in, at O'Malley at the Skateboard Park. And so we reached out to Mayor Verga, and before we knew it, he had asked the Essex County Sheriff's Department to come and do some awesome graffiti removal, not just for that one location, but through the whole city. So we appreciated that very much. And I wanted to just commend Cape Ann Animal Aid for today's celebration of the Walter and Yvonne Wood Wing of Hope, a reality. It was awesome.
That's it.
So shout out to them. And then finally, a reminder that this Saturday, from 1:00 to 5:00, at Stage 4 Park, is a concert in honor and memory of Dave Brown. And there will be food trucks from 1:00 to 5:00, Stage 4 Park. And also, just to note that Billy Joel paid tribute to him for having played guitar for Billy Joel for 10 years right after he passed away. And it should be a real special event, particularly for those of us who had the pleasure of knowing him. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Majota.
No request to the mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Worthingley.
You're going down the line, but you're jumping to the other one.
Yeah, we're working towards the middle.
I get it. That was quite a list of many events that you are encouraging people to be part of. Val, I appreciate that. I was at the Cape Ann Animal Aid dedication this morning. It really is remarkable to see, I was at the groundbreaking four or five months ago, and to see it come to fruition is really remarkable. And it took a lot of hard work and money to do that, so kudos to them. I want to give a shout out to Counselor Nolan for his role. It's always behind the scenes, that he doesn't take credit for, but I'm going to make sure people know that he plays an integral part, not just going and enjoying and appreciating and seeing the role of kids and parents and families in the Fish Box Derby, but people might not know that he also is an expert mechanic and uses his skills to help people produce their cars for the Fish Box Derby. And I give him a lot of respect. He doesn't get paid to do it, and he's just volunteering and helping people, and you should be commended for that. And I think this is not your first year doing it. It's probably 20, maybe more. So thank you, Sean. A lot of people appreciate it. On Saturday morning, there's a lot going on this Saturday, but Saturday morning, from 9:00 to 12:00, my kids and I are organizing a big cleanup event. I think we're going to have 100 people, and we're starting at Gloucester High School. It's all volunteer. If any counselors want to join us, they're welcome to. If you want to be in a photo op, you need to pick up a little litter, too. And the sheriff's anti-graffiti team is coming back to Gloucester on Friday as part of our cleanup. They work with us on this, and if anybody knows of any graffiti on public property or on property of nonprofits, the sheriff's team can take care of that. So I'm helping, I'll be running them around town once we identify those locations. Back in March, we had a resident who came here really out of the goodness of her heart to plead for railings at the bleachers at Dorothy Talbot Rink. And there's some question whether there has been some in the past and then been taken away. There is some liability to the city, and more importantly than just the money part of it, there's the safety of people that we need to address. I'm not the building inspector, so it's not my expertise, but there are no railings apparently right now at the bleachers at Talbot Rink. And she came here before Oral Communications, which I think, it's not a lot of people on the call right now, but Oral Communications is really communication to the mayor, witnessed by the council. Mayor's office responded with a letter saying, within two weeks, she wrote back saying that the project is on track for being done this summer. I'm not pointing fingers, but the job hasn't been done, hasn't been started. In fact, there's no communication as to when that is going to happen. So I'd like to just elevate that in whatever way we can use our influence to say this is important. And, you know, I don't want to be that person that says, well, we could have done it and someone got hurt, but we've been on notice. And so I want to make sure that it's clear here that we're also requesting the mayor and for the administration to figure out a plan to get railings at the bleachers at Dorothy Talbot Rink. That's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Grow.
Interestingly, I spoke to both, the woman who spoke, let me bring her up, but Oral Communications today, and also to Joe Cahill, to ask her about the progress of that, and they are in fact working on it. They have issues that they have to deal with in terms of ADA compliance and getting the rails in so that they don't trigger wholesale repations of the bleachers. So this is an ongoing, in-progress project, and they understand the gravity of getting it done, so they expect, they're working on it currently, just as an update. That's it for me.
Counselor Nolan.
I have no questions from the mayor. I do want to say that we wrapped up a wonderful year in the city of Gloucester. We had a ton of wonderful events that were very successful.
Summer.
The summer. The summer, the season. And a lot of positive results from our beach, from our areas maritime, with the Skunna Festival, the Fiesta, all kinds of festivals that have happened over the year, the summer, the season, Dylan. And this wouldn't be possible without the city of Gloucester and its administration, Department of Public Works, police, fire. They've all put their time into it. We've had some tense moments with some of the rescues, the different things that happened with the fire department that have gone on, the police department. But I want to thank all of our public workers for what they have done. We're into school season now. Let's get behind our teachers and find out what we can do to help them and to make it magical for the winter with winter events and continue the good vibe and good feeling that we've had all year. Thank you. and continue the good vibe and good feeling that we've had all year. Thank you.
I'd also like to remind everybody that on Thursday night, we are having the continuation of our public comment period at our public hearing with the joint meeting of the City Council and Planning Board. If you have an opinion one way or the other, please come and voice it. You can do it online or in person. And, no, they can, no, Monday was the, was the, the, the email, but I mean, they can come via Zoom. They can attend via Zoom is what I meant, online. The public comment, the comment emails were being accepted up until yesterday, 4 o'clock yesterday afternoon. But, you know, if you do send them to us, we get them. So, anyway, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Gross, seconded by everybody. I'll pick Councillor Gilman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.